Support.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is public comment. This is a time for the public to make comment about county business. The rules are first ask for people in the room and then we'll ask for people on Zoom. Each person, we're asked, we're asked you to identify yourself by name and who you're affiliated with. You'll have three minutes to make your comments. Please keep it civil and don't get personal. So is there anybody in the room that wants to comment, make a public comment? Is there anybody on Zoom who would like to make a public comment? Please raise your hand. Okay. We'll see anybody, so we'll move on. Our next item is on the agenda is administration administrator's report. So Matt's gonna go up for it.
Okay. Just the updates on the ongoing large projects for the, for the county. The circuit court building, we have the, the vendors contracted for the environmental and geotechnical studies. We've gotten the permission from the port. It should be out there. The port was mowing parts of that area down for them and they'll be getting that taken care of. And then the, the test pits and everything in the next week or two. And I haven't heard the schedule on the, on the environmental items. And so that's, that's underway. We're working on that. It's still probably five to six, five to seven weeks out before we get results on that. And so we'll, we're, we're working away on, on certifying if that's a possible site or any kind of hurdles that we might have to jump over to consider that. Also on the ambulance service plan, we, the committee has had two meetings in the last week. We are scheduling the interviews with the two applicants this Friday. And so we'll get more information out. Applicants have been contacted about that and they'll be provided questions and everything on that. We are checking with the state whether that needs to be a public meeting. The committee meetings was more organizational than that, but where, where we are interviewing them and it's a part where we will be giving a recommendation to a governing body. We just want to make sure whether it's a public meeting or not. We'll also have that determined by, by the end of the day, hopefully, and be able to notice that up and, and get that taken care of as necessary. Those meetings will be held here in the Aragon separately with the two applicants. And so we'll, we'll get that information out as we can. So those are the two of the big projects that we have that are, that are going down. Just wanted to also point out, we'll be getting, I'd mentioned photographs of Morrow County that we want to look at getting large prints and put them around in some of our buildings. We've got a stack of them down at Valerie's desk. We'll be engaging with the commission. Oh, you got them with you?
Yeah.
Good. So after this meeting, we'll let you have a chance to go through those. If there's ones that you particularly like, you can just put a check mark on the post note with it. And we'll be consolidating those and, and taking a look at ordering some of those to, to kind of add some artwork and, and local pride to her area. It's, a lot of these photographs are done from a person who loves Morrow County, but that does live in the Hermiston area, does a bang up job. They, I hope you'll be impressed with some of the photos. A lot of landscape photos, old building barns, grain silos, wind turbines, a little bit of everything and anything. So some beautiful photos there. And that's all I have for, for right now. We've got a good report from the search and rescue that's coming up. That was a big thing down in the south part of the county. I just want to acknowledge the coordinated efforts and appreciate our emergency manager really stepped up and his experience was really key on, on keeping all the different people and organizations engaged. And so looking forward to a report from Sheriff Bowles and, and Steve on that. So that's my summarized report.
Thank you, Matt. Open agenda, anything you want to do or not?
Nothing. Nothing.
I would like to at this time suggest something is we do have a report. We have several people here, I think several, Steve's here and for the emergency management to give us a report on, they were called out, you know. I'd like to put them up here so they don't have to. I, I don't, actually, I'm not sure, are they on here, Matt?
It's under department reports is where we have them.
I, I would like to move that up so they can go about their job. Whoever was going to give us that, is that all right with you guys?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll move that, I'm gonna move that up right after our, I guess we'll go to our public hearing.
After the public hearing?
Yeah. Is that okay? We got consent agenda, public hearing. I guess we could put it first, well, no, before we do our business, I'll just have to give the report. Okay. Okay. Next up is our consent agenda. Is there anything on there you want, you want to talk about?
I didn't have, I didn't have anything.
Okay.
I'll move for approval of the consent agendas presented. Second.
Move to second and further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Next is our public hearing on our supplemental budget.
Morning. Kevin Ins, my instructor. Do you need to open the hearing before I do the report?
Yeah, we do. I was just looking through here and see, there's something official I need to.
And he did not include a script for this one.
I mean, I, I mean, I could just do it, but I don't know if there's a special script that needs to go on.
I don't think.
There's not a special script. It's just to, it's just the hearing to consider the supplemental budget for fiscal twenty-four.
Adoption of something, is that what you call adoption?
Well, deliberation, consideration of that's, that's what the hearing is for. And then adoption would be the action that follows.
It's gonna be our final.
There's something here.
I guess I shouldn't have to, I don't know, do it, okay. Right there, okay. Then I'm gonna call the public meetings open. And this will be to consider the approval of the twenty twenty-four supplemental budget and adjusting the appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as detailed. So with that, we'll start with the staff report.
So first I just want a housekeeping item on this. On the cover sheet for the agenda item, we got the resolution number correct under the suggested action or motion, which is R two zero two four dash one three. But on the attachments, I believe it just says R two zero two four dash X X. So and there's two attachments. One is the detail of the supplemental budget that was published on our website and then the Gazette Times. And then the second attachment is the, is the resolution. So should the board adopt that resolution, we would obviously need to modify that to reflect the correct resolution number instead of what's listed. So we are preparing a supplemental budget to modify the current budget as amended for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The primary changes, and we talked about this a little bit when we did the, the budget hearings. We are moving, we moved a significant amount of the property insurance, liability insurance dollars from a non-departmental and more appropriately classified those along with the, the departments or organizational units that those amounts belong to when they were originally budgeted FY twenty-four. They were budgeted non-departmental, but as we paid, expended those funds throughout the year, we classified them in the individual departments and organizationally units. There's some increases in, and I detailed all of them as they relate to each of the funds. So I'm just touching on the, on the most significant ones. Our landfill related fees and hauling fees due to the, the significant, I think it was thirty-seven percent increase and, and costs. And then also in the landfill departments in the general fund, the household hazardous waste event ended up being significantly more expensive. The costs of that were based on, are based on volume than what had originally been budgeted for. And we were not able to foresee that. So that change has been put in there. The last significant item would be in the resiliency fund. There were some grants that were of ARPA funds that were not anticipated in the budget. And then also the commitment of ARPA funds to cover the interim ambulance services. And that's reflected in this as well. So do you, if we happen to answer any specific questions or comments that? The commissioners have.
I don't have anything.
Okay, with that, we'll open public testimony. Is there anyone in the room or on Zoom that wants to speak in favor of adopting the supplemental budget? Don't see anybody. Is there anybody in the room or on Zoom that wants to speak in opposition? Final category with us, we have is, is there anyone that wants to speak is to just comment? Either for or against. See anybody? If that, don't see anybody, we'll close the public testimony part. And then the commission can make this decision here, make the discussion and. I entertain a motion to approve resolution R dash two three four dash thirteen.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty-four dash thirteen, adopting the supplemental budget and adjusting the appropriations for fiscal year twenty twenty-four as detailed herein. Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried. Okay. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you.
We'll close the public hearing. And next up, our business items, our first item will be emergency management. They're gonna give us a report on the incident or how, what they did the other night. So I had a bit of talking to Steve outside. I don't know how to turn up this, I'm not talking to the board. I thought that was a good idea, just kind of this rundown, because this was, we're gonna have a chance to put things in action here. So I'm gonna just turn it over to you guys.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
So on this search and rescue incident, on June eighth, nine forty-three P M, the Morrow County Sheriff's Office received a report of a missing two and a half year old male above Hebner, above Rock Street. The juvenile actually went missing around eight thirty. So when we responded, we were over an hour behind the game to begin with. By the time we responded, got set up up there, we're looking at probably an hour and a half. This two and a half year old has been out there. We were kind of behind the, the eight ball there for a little bit, but we got set up and going. Set up an I C temporarily. When I showed up on scene, decided we're gonna move that down to the hospital. It was set up on Rock Street, so we're gonna move that down to the hospital, get a little bit more room, get a little bit further away from the family and not so much with the right there in the neighborhood. Contacted emergency manager, I got him on scene and started getting everything organized with Hebner Fire, acting in operations and started setting up searches and grid searches and the emergency manager and started requesting resources. And from having doing many incidences in the past with Steve and his connections and his training and experience in the emergency management, when you start requesting resources, his response was just right there. And I requested something, he had it. So I was really impressed with that. So he did a good job in that. So during the night, we had volunteers showed up, like forty volunteers. So the volunteer response was, was great. Keeping track of all that was a little, a little task, but we got it done and went pretty smooth. And then through the night, we didn't find the child. And so the following morning, more volunteers started showing up. So we started sending volunteers home and started the process of going into phase two, where we're gonna send home some first responders, get new fresh responders in, send search and rescue of volunteers home and process the new ones in. So total, we had about a hundred volunteers that showed up. So we all were searching and I'll let Steve talk about the resources that we had on the scene. But the child was found the following morning about eight twenty from a searcher on a four wheeler. And the two and a half year old walked, we figured over a mile, which was, we never thought he would be walking that far for sure. But he did, he, he was fine. He went and got checked out by the hospital. He had a couple of scrapes, but other than that, he was fine. He was more concerned about riding the four wheeler. He wanted to ride the four wheeler, so. Everything turned out well. And this incident right here, we had to wear many different hats, you know, operations, planning, logistics. But we got it done and went really smooth. It was a big turnout for the first responders and they did a great job. We're real happy with it, with the outcome of this incident. And the family was just overwhelmed with emotion, as anybody could imagine. That was kind of a, I don't know how to explain it, but it was just the emotional awesome scene at the end when, when the child was found and the family got to come and reunite with the child. So that was, that was pretty humbling to, to witness. I'll let Steve talk about the resources and a little bit about the after action review that we did.
Good morning, Dylan. So as you see on the board, I think we wound up with about nineteen agencies that participated in this rescue as it scaled up. I would say, even till it was awesome, right? Timely, we started making calls about two, two thirty in the morning, seeing where this was going just to be prepared for a second shift as we rolled forward on the rescue to bring additional resources, dogs, drones, infrared, liflight. We started with liflight. We needed infrared cameras on the helicopter, but a spotlight was better than nothing to start. We had Astoria Coast Guard on standby, but by the time they could fuel, crew up and get out here, it would have been daylight anyway and their primary mission is maritime. So we stood them down and bear two out of Montana was able to respond to that and, and support that part of the mission. I would say from a communication standpoint, it's awesome. This would be my first one in a rural setting out here with all the different agencies. Phenomenal teamwork, right? Communication was good across the board. I was especially surprised, if you will, from the community. I mean, we weren't begging for volunteers. It was almost too many. We had to put in some quality control measures, et cetera. The AAR, so post incident, we did an after action review and had all the agencies come down so we could go through what worked well. I would say when you have a positive outcome like that, it makes this meeting easier and it makes the AARs easier. So generally speaking, it went extremely well from the outside looking in. We were able to identify some challenges, equipment, planning, communication. There's always something you can improve on. So we've incorporated those into our after action plan as we move forward. So you'll see a list of items that we need to purchase from an equipment standpoint, software, et cetera. Other than that, pending any questions, specific questions you may have, that's, that's a thirty thousand foot view.
Yeah. You know, it's always good to do it under, you know, like these things that happen, at least you get to test, you know, you see how things work.
Under red, yes.
Out of curiosity, I've heard different things, watched on TV and stuff. When you do a search, do you, you divide it up into grids or what's the technique you use when you get a lot of volunteers like that to make sure everybody's, what, how do you do that?
Well, from, from my level, it's a little different than what would be undersheriff or sheriff. So there's different methodology, depends on landscape weather, right? That time of day. I believe on this one, we start out with grid searches from last known point of location and, and went out. That, that identified some operational requirements, able to print maps, search equipment, safety briefing cards, there's a lot of little things that we had to just inject manually, if you will. But it would depend on the search and I would let the sheriff or undersheriff speak more directly to the type of grid. Because I will agree doctrinally or conventional wisdom, this child was, it didn't follow the book, right? Did not follow the book.
I have a quick question to add, what was the terrain?
So he wound up going uphill, correct?
So it was dirt, sand, rocky and the, I would say the, the thing that made it the most difficult, the grass up there was like three to five feet tall. I mean, so we lucked out on this evening, the weather was sixty-five degrees through the night, which was really good. So during the night, he just laid down on the grass and went to sleep. And the following morning, I'm sure he got woke up by the helicopter and has got up and started walking again. And that's when the searcher found him near the top, near one of the telephone pole. He said he'd gone up the hill and then saw this little kid just pop up by the telephone pole and started walking toward him. He, at first, he said he was kind of in shock, you know, couldn't relax, couldn't believe it was the kid and he was fine. So we, we lucked out about the weather. I would say within an hour after he was located, the sky got gray, it started raining and everything. So we really lucked out and the weather was the main thing that we got lucky with.
Was there water located nearby or?
So that was a major concern.
Right. It's, I'm just assuming.
Do you want me to show them out? Sure. So on the one side, you got the, the reservoir and it's just rocky, steep. And we hit that pretty heavily and we had a boat in the water, you know, scanning back and forth because I mean, that would have been worst case scenario if you, if you would have got on that side. It's real steep terrain, or even down Hager Street, all the way to the reservoir right there. That's all steep and we were worried about him going over there and, and something happening. So we hit that heavily. So we started on that side and started working from the cross area. There you see right there, that little, that's the tower and the cross is right in there. Well, he was actually located, I don't know if you can see on here. He was actually located over here, like right up here in a telephone, there's a telephone pole here at the top. He was located over here. I mean, so he walked from the houses over here where they were at. I mean, so that's a long walk for two and a half.
It's a steep hill.
Yes.
Looks like he took it now.
Yeah. Yeah. I couldn't make it over that hill that day to nap.
Right. He had his proper backpack and gave her a good.
That's amazing.
Yeah. When the volunteers show up, I mean, you gotta get a list of all the volunteers. You gotta put them in search groups. You gotta break the map into quadrants and then start doing grid searches. You know, we had people on foot, four wheelers, like Steve said, drone, helicopter. And we had horse on standby.
Dogs.
Dogs, yeah. The first night, we had our dog run the night and then we had a, the Umatilla County dog set up for the following morning. And they were actually out searching when, when the child was located. So we're ready, we're right in the middle of getting turned over to phase two when he was located, so.
Now, would the dog go out and just find a person or do you have to give it something that's?
We have to get a scent item.
No.
Yep. So each dog had to get a scent item and then they start going up and they were really hitting in the area. So when he went missing, there was a group of kids together and they were, you know, behind the house and they went up a certain distance. Well, the dogs kept hitting in that area because that's where all the kids were playing and everything like that. I, I think the canine would have found him eventually, but he just kept hitting on that area heavily because that's where the kids were playing and everything, so. And we had a lot of searchers up that probably made it a little difficult for the canines as well. We've had searchers up there all over the place, so.
So you might have said that when you got the canine, but it's, it smells more than just marijuana.
Oh, yeah.
Nobody cares about marijuana.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, so.
Do your drones have thermal?
There's dead. We're right now, FEMA is reviewing an RUAB plan because that's a part of our grant approval for next year, fiscal year, to include that. So it's under review right now, commissioner, and hopefully we'll be able to go into phase two. They approved phase one, so we can continue to make that part of the program a little more robust.
Yeah, the ones we're looking to purchase, they definitely will. Because I mean, there's been a few searches where it made it clear we, we, we need to get them, so.
Well, I know there's nothing worse for a parent than when they lose a child. I mean, you know, there's just no feeling like it. I mean, you don't know. So I'd like to commend you guys for, it was an awesome job and, you know.
It was definitely a team effort. I mean, it wasn't one person, it was a team effort up there and everybody working together, so.
Yeah. Just tell you, because you're here.
Pass it on.
Pass it on.
Pass it on, yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. Stuff is a, the first business, community corrections, you know, building, number six five four.
Good morning. So this is an amendment to my I G A. Basically, House Bill five two zero four, community corrections in the state of Oregon, received sixteen million dollars. Morrow County's portion of that is roughly sixty-seven thousand. And this is due to the measure one ten reform.
Forward, does anybody have any questions? I'll pay a motion to approve.
I'll move to assign the amended intergovernmental agreement number six five four three. I'll second.
Move to second and any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Next step will be, I would be able to give you precise certification that the partners know.
So Dave, for the record, I will recuse myself. I currently doesn't have any contracts with Humantol Electric, but I know that stuff's the favorite. Pulled it before in the public record that they show that they do, but just in abundance of caution, I would recuse for any discussion or voting on this.
Okay.
Good morning. For the record, Tamara Mabbett, planning director. I just asked Stephen Resics at the very last minute if he could pull up a map. So he might be joining, or he might not be, that's on me. He was working on another deadline and just finished, so why not add one more thing to his place? So the letter in front of you is the county's application, review of the application for site certificate submitted by Sunstone Solar, Pankate Renewables is the holding company. It's fairly pro forma. I know we seem like we've had so many of these in the last six or eight months. This is an especially large site. If approved, it would be the largest, we think, in the country, largest solar project. If you need some bragging rights, you, you've got one here. And so it's over ten thousand acre site boundary with ninety-four hundred acres of solar array, fifty-five miles of new access roads, nine and a half miles of new two hundred and thirty K B transmission, eighty-six miles of the thirty-four point five K B collector lines, four O N M buildings, two hundred and sixty acres of temporary construction, about between thirty-six and a hundred and twenty-seven acres of battery storage. I know that's a big difference, but that's the information we have. And then about fifty-eight miles of seven to eight foot tall perimeter fencing. So if somebody's in the fencing business, there's some work to be had here. And as you know, Pankate has been in front of you with their proposed mitigation plan. Let's see, Stephen, are you on? Can pull up a map? I don't see him yet, so we might do this without the map. Oh, there is, yeah. And then.
Yeah, I'm here, let me pull the map up for you.
Thank you. Like a lot of applications, when you've looked at several over, over the course of a period of time, we get smarter and they get smarter. And they submitted a really complete application. So Daisy and I tag teamed and split the difference and also collaborated with emergency management, with Public Works and Weeds and came up with a letter in front of you. So the first item we wanted to draw to the citing council's attention is the fire mitigation plan. They have a, a list, a really good list of mitigation measures. I think our comfort zone is to actually have a plan that Steve. I think our comfort zone is to actually have a plan that Steve um. Uh our emergency manager gets to review and give his final approval on, so that we have something on record. And we don't have to just refer to a list of conditions. And again, those conditions are good, we just want um our local emergency responders and our emergency manager to be able to take a look at. Um what's in there. The the other issue is traffic impacts and they've done a good job coordinating with our public works director, Eric Geims. Um we're just asking that the road use agreement be a condition of approval, that's become our um standard. In terms of weed uh mitigation, uh they have some ideas, um as you know, Corey Sweeney. We need to clone him, um uh if for no other reason to to work on. Uh weed mitigation for these large projects, particularly something of this footprint. Um so we just asked that the not not just weed plan be reviewed and approved by the weed supervisor. Um housing impacts is something, it used to be in the socioeconomic standard. Um we just drew to the attention in this letter that there will be ten permanent employees, which we can absorb. But four-hundred-and-seventy-three construction workers is a lot of construction workers and as we identified in this letter. We don't have, um the state doesn't have a cumulative impact standard and planners and other agencies have talked to them about it. So we very likely will see a couple of these projects under construction at the same time. So um as a land use planner, those of you who are experienced on the planning commission, you well know. We don't typically review something like housing impacts. But with this larger comprehensive consolidated state process, they do. And as long as they do, then we reacted to that and provided, bless you. Um. Just some notes about housing impacts and again, for the record, Pankate's been um more proactive than we've we've seen. Uh energy company be um uh about a year and a half ago. I asked if they would meet with the cities to talk one-on-one with the city planners or city managers to say, hey, we're we're gonna have a whole bunch of workers. And they did that and they were really proactive, they're not in the business of building housing, but they are willing to do lots of things like. Um guarantee of housing occupancy, for example. I know they've met with the city of Boardman and that has prompted some, um very likely some new R V development out there. So we just, in this letter, requested that um. The state consider putting together a uh ad hoc committee to look at cumulative impacts of of these developments. And then the last piece is what you're probably more familiar with, I think the applicants did. Um as robusted uh treatment of addressing the rezone and the land use exception criteria. Both in terms of the technical part of their review and then also in their proposed mitigation plan and they had, um as you know. An approved and signed mitigation plan. And Stephen's map shows the footprint, so.
Then you get a chance to go to the FSEC calendar, can you give us a rundown of? I don't know where we're all at with this project or where FSEC is with this project. I mean, as far as what's the next step?
Yeah.
Little timeline?
Um I um I can tell you the steps, I don't know the timeline because it takes a while for them to review.
Kind of just an idea of where we're at in this whole.
Right, so this will be the second formal time the county submitted comments, so when an application is filed, they file a notice of intent. And then the state asks the local jurisdictions um for a list of local applicable criteria, we did that. Um this is the application that addresses all the county standards as well as all the other agency standards. It will take the citing council some time to 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 collect all these comments and send it to review. And then the next step would be a draft proposed order that would go to the citing council. And FSEC's really good about having their hearings in the region where it's happening. Um Pankate had a their formal open house, public open house, I think you mentioned that Chair Sykes. Um Daisy Goble and I attended that and um there was mostly affected landowners and a few other folks who. Um attended that as well. Uh so after this, then they'll have, the citing council will have a review of the draft proposed order. And then after the draft proposed order, the DPO, um if there are any changes, staff will make those changes and then have the the public hearing for a final order. And then after the final order, if there's no protest, there's a. Appeal period, I can't remember exactly what that is, I almost included that uh flow chart with this and I didn't. Um and an appeal of a citing council decision goes to the Oregon Supreme Court. I don't expect any appeals, but you never know.
Now, you you mentioned how big it is, it's, you know, I've heard. Biggest biggest in the in the Northwest, I mean, yeah, biggest in Northwest. Some said the biggest of the world.
U S, yeah, I know, that's what.
U S, yeah, and and not the the Northwest, the U S, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're kind of used to, you know, wind projects, big projects and stuff. But I don't think we've ever hit four-hundred-and-seventy-three construction workers, so can you say what, what is the? Traffic and stuff, what can the public expect, just, uh I mean, you know, we we know what wind looks like, it's a big bunch of sections of towers. Are these just trucks with panels come in, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, we have, we already have some solar, but they're not.
We do, yeah, just adjacent to this, actually. Can you pop that layer on Stephen of the existing solar, thank you? Um yeah, Eric isn't here to expect it, but um really just semis hauling materials, it's nothing like the. Um long blades that really require, you know, some traffic delays. Uh I think those trucking folks have got that down to a science too in some pretty um narrow, um short. Um turns, but um the solar project in that Stephen's displaying, that's the next era project, right? Strawberry Lane and bombing range road. I don't know that people really noticed much truck traffic when that was constructed.
No, that's what I'm saying, it did, you know, I don't think many people notice it because it's, it's a lot smaller than this one. You know, so that's what I was asking is 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 just, you know, nothing negative, just is, could people expect?
Mm-hmm. And they're also developing phases, but each phase would have four-hundred-and-seventy-three, that's what they're projecting, which is. Yeah, in addition to.
One of my questions is, are they gonna be here all of the time or is?
That's what they're saying, that's why we say, you know, if the state has a housing standard, let's take that pretty seriously. And you know, I think there are some private sector folks who are, who see that and um I mean, it's a great time to. To go out and try to build um some duplexes or apartments or R V parks, you could probably get a signed contract from. Um the contractor or the subcontractors, yeah, we'll rent that out for the next six years and. That's what banks like to see, if you wanna borrow some money to do that. Um it, those people will be coming from a long distance. One of the things that we have tried to be proactive with when we meet with the companies. Um there's a special provision that we've adopted under our code, it was allowed in the farm zone, which you to know is really restrictive. That says if um um that allows temporary R V parking. Um as long as it, the the location, general properties were addressed in the initial conditional use permit application. So we just approved one last week for a large um uh wind project. And there are a couple of property owners who worked with them and they're on that list, we can now permit those. And the reason that's important, not because we're just eager to require people get permits. But you can imagine folks like Steve and the sheriff's office, first responders, they wanna know where people are living. In an R V out next to a farmer's shop, right? So if there's an emergency or if there's a fire, um that's the main reason we want to have a permit um process. Um in the past, I think just before I came back to Morrow County, it was kind of an issue, so it's it's a great. You know, temporary source of revenue for some farmers, but if we know where they are and we can say, hey, please don't start an open fire.
Right.
Just before harvest season, for example, or and we know where they are.
Color of existing, just so you get an idea of the difference in size. So you meant the existing, that purple on the lower left and yellow. Fair amount bigger.
Chair, I I'd have a question.
No. Um I mean, you having attended those meetings, is it just bare earth uh development on there for the weed mitigation or? And we had that really great thing about.
The sheep.
The sheep and that, which is cool, and I I mean, persons, I mean. What what what's their plans with it, is it gonna be similar to the existing?
It it uh the existing solar project, yeah, they'll um. Probably put a permanent weed killer down and sometimes gravel and um. That's the best way to maintain the weeds for these larger, and then it's fenced. They don't want to be burning tumbleweeds off the edge of the fences either.
Now, okay, go ahead. Um that provision to allow temporary housing, it seems to me, that's been around a while, hasn't it? Wasn't it implemented when the first? Solar projects or wind projects started coming in or?
I don't know.
I seem to remember that when we were on planning, but anyway.
Probably adopted it when you're on planning commission and I don't know.
Yes, my question would be, is that used quite a bit, do the farmers know about it, is there a way to let people know that? Do we, do we wanna push it or, you know, let people know?
Yeah, actually, I have with the underlying landowner, so you know, you're you you'll have this property leased. And if you also wanna, and if you've got a shop or a location to park some temporary R Vs. Make sure you get in on the list and I did that with this project and the next era project. Um I don't know how to broadcast that.
There's a list that you keep available temporary housing properties that you give to the construction company, is that how it works?
I don't, I don't.
Oh, I didn't know what you meant, talk about the list.
The list of landowners?
Oh, the list of landowners, okay, I think.
Who who asked to their property to be included in our review? So in that hierarchy of state permit, once the site certificate is issued. Then I think under O R S four-six-nine, it says a county shall approve a conditional use permit. So it's a pro forma perfunctory task. Um what we've asked these developers is to include a list of landowners who might want to have. Uh permission to have temporary R Vs and as long as it's included in that conditional use permit. Then they can come to us with their individual site plans and get those permitted.
I'm ready, did you have a construction start date?
I I can get you that.
I'm just, I'm just curious, approximate.
Um I think um. Late twenty-twenty-five, early twenty-twenty-six on this one.
We have some time.
A little bit of time, yeah, but the, you know, there's a great big one going on, started a few weeks ago, right?
Yep.
Any more questions, you tell them.
So so in the in the uh attached letter, it obviously has the concern of the weed mitigation. So how does that process go if we approve this letter, it's with the county having concern about the proposed weeds? Mitigation plan, right? So FSEC is the ultimate decision maker in that, so what they they will accept or deny. And then it's up to the county, what does the county have authority to do if we don't? Think that their weed mitigation plan is up to our standards.
It's a very good question, that's why we asked that that weed mitigation plan be reviewed by our weed.
By it.
Uh yeah, by Corey, right? Um so it's a really good question. They, FSEC has a list of conditions, I don't know, four or five pages long. And the way I like to describe it is they're in the first position, so if they're violating a condition. Uh and we know about it, we'll say, hey, is there, you know, there's some issues with whatever it might be. And and really, for the size and scope of these projects, we don't get very many. Um weeds and fire abatement are probably the two biggest ones. Um then they'll try to proceed their code enforcement. We can also do code compliance on our own, independent of this, but um.
Then we've learned from what we've done, right? We know that there's some issues, so as long as we have the authority and the ability to to process. The mitigation plan to where it fits what we need because we're firsthand, I mean, FSEC's not here after the fact, right?
Right.
So and we are, so.
And um even if they have a mitigation plan and even if the state's pursuing compliance. Um not, I'm not your legal counsel, but um I think Justin and Greg would agree, we still, apart from that or in addition to that. You know, if if things went really haywire and it was just, you know, not just weeds. Um uh our weed supervisor could still uh proceed with enforcement on um the not just weed violation. Which we coordinate with our compliance planner as well.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, uh. Go for the motion, then I'll obtain a motion to approve the letter.
Make a motion to approve the attached letter.
I'll second. Uh any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up is our letters for town Lexington, O dot, D L C D C grad application.
Yes, um it's. Town of Lexington reached out to me about um having the county sign a letter of support. Uh this is through the D L C D or O dots D L C D, Transportation and Growth Management Program Grant. Allowing them to uh get monies to help develop their comprehensive plan. Uh on how to develop and retain businesses in the Lexington area. And uh street development and other type of of zoning applications. Uh they applied for it last year, they did not get it awarded, they would like to reapply for it. Uh this commission did provide a letter of support last year, this letter is uh is based on that uh with some slight modifications. And uh they're asking for the commission's support on this uh on this grant application. No commitment by the county as far as fiscal or anything like that, um however, uh. I think Tamara would agree that having our cities have robust and updated comprehensive plans is key for their development. And uh something that we would heartily support and and uh help assist on and as needed, so. We'd ask the the commission to uh make a motion to approve and we would have you sign the letter uh at the meeting.
Okay. Alright, I'm totally supportive of this, I mean, I think it's great, they're taking the initiative to do this, but. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed letter of support for Lexington, the D L C's. C D twenty-twenty-four, oh six eighteen.
I'll move to approve the support of. Of the town of Lexington's Transportation Growth Management Program Grant application. I'll second.
I'll give a second and any further discussion?
I I have just had a quick question, so on the letter of support and it's talking about the loop, are are there any plans of putting a? Uh like a shop or anything for the loop transportation in this in this area? That we've thought about? That's, I'm not saying, I'm just saying it might be a good idea, right, it's like a good midpoint. Um if they get the money, is that something that they were considering with the loop or? Probably would not be connected to their comprehensive plan, that would be a little more high level. It would be something that uh the county would be looking at as we look at some kind of shop or transit center. Uh I'm still uh not related to their letter of support, I'm still looking at a filling station slash car uh wash bay. Uh they in conjunction with the with the public works area, so we can have our county vehicles clean and and fueled at hopefully a discounted rate, so. Um that that would tie in with the loop on that, uh the the shop and that is something we're still tackling with the transit center type thing. That's my only question.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Well, thank you, Matt, okay. Our next up is uh Oregon State University Extension Intergovernmental Agreement.
Yes, um Oregon State Union or University Extension uh program contacted us and let us uh know that the contract was expiring at the end of. Uh June and um so they are looking for uh continued support. This is um a program that the the county has contracted with uh O S U Extension to provide. Uh this ranges anything from four-age support to uh to uh other educational programs like proper septic and. Domestic well uh yeah maintenance and such. Uh they've been a key partner and actually have provided me some support on dealing with some agriculture-related items and they're always. Seem to be uh willing to. Seem to be uh willing to do this. Uh, this is a service that the county could choose to provide itself. However, uh uh many rural counties, you know, contract with OSU Extension to provide this. Uh, it is a a cost of a little over two hundred thousand dollars a year, this contract would be for a ten year contract. Uh, wherewith they would be limited to spending no more than what the commission approves on the annual uh annual budget. And so um so you would have a say on an annually basis and we could have them come in and. Uh, apply for it, they uh they submitted a letter of request uh on this uh. And so we are looking to see what we can do to uh to see if the commission would like to continue with this relationship. And if so, if we could have you approve signing a a motion to sign that contract and. And proceed with the renewal for a ten year contract with Oregon State University Extension.
I think it's a great program, always have been, it's you know, great for the kids. Integral part of our communities.
I don't just echo what she says that, you know, I think that there's a lot of services that the extension provides, you know.
Really money well spent in our communities.
So I'll move to approve and sign the intergovernmental agreement between Oregon State University Extension Service and Oregon.
Second.
Move to second and further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carried, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Okay, we're done with our business items now, we're gonna have to start with our department reports. Roll in probation semi annual report. Hi.
Matt.
Yeah, you're back.
I failed to introduce myself the first time, so Gina Wilson, Moore County Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant over the Pearl Probation Division. Um, so let's give you some updates, we've been fully staffed, um, there's five of us over there, there's myself. Two POs, work crew supervisor and then a uh support staff. Uh, things are going well, we supervise hundred and nine individuals, this number usually fluctuates by ten. We have majority are males, ninety eight males, eleven females, ninety six cases are felonies, thirteen are misdemeanors. Um, a positive sixty four percent of our clients are employed, that's probably the best it's been. Since I've been in Pearl Information. Treatment court is going well, three individuals are involved. Um, our N fifty seven, our caseload is getting put together currently, I know last time I updated you guys, I was in the planning of. Securing funds for that and that has been since secured and our caseload is now being put together. Um, so hopefully a more in-depth update of that will be next go around, sex offender treatment is going well. Again, we have in-house treatment that comes once a week, things are going well on that. Budget updates, the IGA amendment, we've already discussed that. M fifty seven, um, not much to update you all, things are running smoothly over there. There will be a Pearl Board Roadshow and like a training, um, and I've talked to. Um, Commissioner Sykes about that, I've sent you an email, um, but there will be. Training um in regards to that at the end of August, I will send an invite out probably the end of this week. Um, or early next week so that you guys can attend if you guys do want to. Other than that, that's that's all I have.
The new uh major one ten. I guess not a real full repeal, but has that, is that gonna affect your office?
Um, it has potential, um. I believe we'll have more misdemeanor cases arise from that, yes.
I would assume so as well.
I would assume so.
We've been working through that process with the local DAs with more on Umatilla County and community counseling. Um, we have a meeting coming up to finalize some plans. Uh, we'll be working closely with Umatilla County, so we're uh close to being final in that plan.
And that's through deflection or?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alright, it's good, thank you very much.
Thank you for the report.
Appreciate it. Sheriff's Office, welcome to the report.
Good morning. Brian Snyder, under uh under Sheriff Mark and Sheriff's Office. Uh, we've got a short report today, um, things are going well, we're busy uh like everybody else. Civil, our civil division is full still, which is great and they're. Uh, doing their thing, uh dispatch, we have a couple openings still, but we are in the process of. Uh, currently in the process of doing backgrounds on two, two individuals, so we're hopeful that we'll be able to get those filled in the next few weeks. We do have one dispatcher that's leaving this uh this month, uh she's being a trader and going to another environment. So obviously, there's no love within the county, anyways, moving on from that, uh, but uh.
You know lateral moves is good, right? For the county?
Well, anyways. Depends on which way they're they're.
Depends on which department, right?
Yeah, yeah, we heard from Lieutenant Wilson, so P and P is up and running and doing really well, um, yeah. The uh patrol, we're still shorthanded in there, we have uh come July one. Uh, with the approval of our positions, we're gonna have about six openings. Um, the good thing is, I mean, we have a few of them, we have one field uh that he'll uh, we hired our full-time marine deputy, so we are super excited over that. He starts July one, so uh he's a uh retired from the Navy, he's a master chief. Uh, he had twenty five year, or thirty years?
Yeah.
Thirty years experience in the Navy, um, he spent twenty of it as an MP or military police officer. So we're super excited to hire him, uh, a lot of hopeful there. Uh, we also uh believe we have our, one of our, one of our OHV full-time deputy positions filled uh July one as well. Um, and then we're in background with one, one more. And we have some interviews coming up next Thursday, so we're hopeful, um, it's taking time, but we're getting there, uh, and. Uh, I believe that's it, but I'm definitely happy to answer questions as always.
So on your marine deputy, um, so as you know, I'm on river. I haven't had a boat inspection since two thousand fourteen. Does there plans to have the new deputy being? Able to spend a day on the parking lot doing inspections?
Yeah, so that will be part of the expectations and it's a requirement to get those uh boat inspections done, so. It'll be more than uh just a day a week, um, and that'll be one of his big pushes. Uh, or one of our big pushes for him to starting off, um, mainly because we haven't had one. A full-time marine deputy for two years now, so we are, you know, th- those registrations and boat inspections are definitely way behind. And so that'll be one of his primary duties, especially this year, uh, because he'll be learning too, you know, learning our area, learning our, you know. The the so civilian side of things for say, but yes, those those will be and. Will the, we'll have a better opportunity and that resource will be there, so those that want it can call, start calling in again and we can schedule it. And so we can get those done and get caught up on those, because we're probably across this county is way behind on on those right uh inspections. And if you need an inspection or a hand inspection, you could call the sheriff's office and we have a staff in-house currently that could could do that.
Well, Brian, just just out of information, just to give me a refresher anyway, and there's been any, not been any issues or anything. Can you, can you uh tell me uh the interaction, the shows with the OHV park, exactly what the, when are you there and how?
Well, if we were, so that's a long-winded answer, Commissioner, uh, if we're fully staffed, the short version. If we were fully staffed at seven days a week, um, currently we are not fully staffed, so it's uh Thursday through Sunday. Um, from eight to six and depending on events, we we fluctuate that schedule just a little bit. Um, you know, it could be a ten to eight, depending on if there's a a large-scale event and we try to schedule where those where. Uh, our visitors and guests are gonna be more most active and so we we schedule that, or he adjusts his schedule, so he's out and visible during those times.
Yeah, and just so, and now we're getting to a little longer version, just the duties are. Does he, does the deputy, whoever that might be, do they stay around the campground most or do they go out? Around, or what, what's the typical?
Is the entire park, um, so he definitely, he, you know, especially in the morning and evenings, he's around the park. Um, typically, but then during the day, he's out on the trails, checking trails, making sure people aren't, you know, just checking on riders and stuff, we've. Uh, and it it's been, it works really well, we, you know, he's come across people that's. Had a crash or needed some kind of assistance, whether they ran out of gas or or for say, you know, whatever it might be, or they were lost. We, he gets quite a few of those where he's given directions out there. Um, once in a while, he will uh patrol the perimeter of the park, but his main goal. Is to stay within the park and patrolling the the trails and the the um. Park area.
Big question, sure. Um, do you think the change to full-time, full-year has helped with your recruitment on this, uh, the marine and the OHV?
Yes, uh, I mean, we've been able to fill them fairly. Quick, um, compared to where we haven't gotten a single app in two years for either one of the positions, so I I think it's helped. Uh, I think it's helped anyways, um, yes.
Good to hear, so thank you, Commissioner, for allowing us to do that.
Yeah, absolutely, is very appreciative.
Hey, thank you very much, appreciate it.
That seat's too hot, I'm taking this. Uh, for the record, Tamara Mabbett, Planning Director, um. We're hopping in the planning department and um we're almost fully staffed and we will be on June twenty fourth. So last month, um, I I gave a shout out to the sheriff's office for allowing us to transfer somebody over. Uh, we also delayed her start date so that she could finish out that whole shift, that was super nice. Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Still that phone keep you from getting pulled over?
I've been taking photos of her car.
It's a good lifestyle change for her, um, for us as well, we're glad to, I'm excited to have her start. Um, let's see, we had a planning commission work session in May. Um, with Daisy on board, we're uh wrapping up a second round of um code updates. Uh, had some good, good participation both at that meeting and then we've met with certain interest groups prior to that. Um, you've heard about um some of the energy projects and we continue to keep our link on that page. Um, the State Department of Land Conservation and Development is looking at new solars and they have a rack of rural advisory committee. They met out here at Reese Training Center um in May, um, I participated during that day, I did not want to be on that rural advisory committee, I've served. It many times on uh renewable energy committees and it feels like the whole thing is in vain, I don't mean to sound cynical, but. Um, it comes down to a lot of work, a lot of effort and then it comes down to that final version, so. When that final version comes out, I'm happy to provide some last-minute comments, um. To make sure the process is balanced, with states looking at, um, my perspective, I don't know how Korea has communicated this.
Wait on, I was gonna maybe get your input on that, so I'll let you continue and then maybe.
Yeah, I love, and Mike McArthur was there as well, um, I. They say they're supposed to streamline the process and I, it sounds more confusing to me. I also shared at that meeting and submitted some comments that. Uh, they're really focused on this goal three, this exception, et cetera. And I shared the story of how we found two cases now, two examples, it works well for us, um. Um, the goal exception was intended um to be a difficult bar, um, a high bar to pass. Um, and if we start. Making that easier for renewable energy, do we start making it easier for everything? And I shared the fix that we have is they um meet most of those goal three exception standards, so as we know, all these renewable. Particularly the solar folks, they wanna locate close to transmission. Um, if they have to build, the more miles of transmission, the less um bottom line um. Appeal that their project would have and the mitigation works at the local level, which very much involves the local decision maker, so. That's kind of my takeaway.
So I guess. Comments I heard during the Korea meeting on this was that, I don't think it was just from Mike, but other people said. It's being heavily driven by John Jennings and his agenda. That um there was, if I remember right, the legislator that kind of proposed having the whole rat process.
Sure, yes.
Showed up to a meeting and wasn't even really allowed to provide any input, is that John Jennings was kind of just drove the agenda and. Based off the comment, way I took what you said is that. Some of this is kind of preordained in that, like you said, you you'll wait until the end to see what's, but it's kind of. The state's driving it and. I think that a lot of the people from the Korea aspect thought that there wasn't a whole lot of outside input being. Really solicited.
I'm glad Korea's at the table, though, I think that's important.
I I think that Mike's a great guy and. Being fair of things.
I think so.
And what I took out of the Korea meeting is this was last Friday is that. It seemed something like their. The idea is to come up with I areas that maybe in each county. Or maybe it'd be a statewide process, easily identified areas that it would be kind of easier to. Get a goal three exception and, you know, some of that is, you know, the soils or. But also uh proximity to transmission lines, like you alluded to, and some of the discussion they were talking about. You know, the soils determination was done from like the nineteen thirties or even earlier. And you know, it's part of creating, you know, there are some farmers that are on this and they say, well, they may classify it as a class type two soil, but. There's only like eight inches worth of dirt before you get to rock and it it only produces twenty bushels of wheat, whereas, you know, a better soil. Should produce, you know, fifty, sixty bushels, so that isn't. Truly reflective of what the productivity of the soil is and I think they were hoping that. Maybe they could look at that as some of the determining criterias of that. Use more like a historical basis of what crop production has been. And if it's a lower production soil, you know, based off of history, but it. The soil is classified as a high-value soil. But history shows you only get twenty bushels of wheat, then this is more of a good area to cite solar on, then.
Does that affect mitigation as well on the soil types?
Yes and no, so if they were able to show that their um non-farm soils, class six or seven. It wouldn't have to do the goal three exception and the goal three exception was the connection to the mitigation.
Well, I think that based off the mind dates presentation here during their the analysis.
Right.
The. The soils that they, or the ground that they were looking at, they talked about forty bushel. Is what that.
Forty, but I don't remember.
Because they looked at how many bushels, how many acres and what the value of that is, and I think that that worked on to their point of how much mitigation they were. So those were the comments.
Yeah, that's good, and also, you know, not to go too much into the weeds, but the solar. The solar citing rules have their own separate soil classification standards, apart from everything else we do on farm ground. To me. That was overkill, it's frustrating that we have to, and one of the soil standards is. You might have a class five, six or seven soil, but if you're in an AVA at an American viticulture area, which. Uh, I think everything from Central County north is in an AVA, you're considered high value or you're considered arable. And so that already bumps you into that category and my intel on the, on how that transpired was really random. And it is not an American viticulture area designation is not really scientifically based and so, but removing that, then you'd have to deal with the. The wine growers and the viticulture and and maybe that's okay, so, but that was just a statewide rubber stamp. Based on really more of a marketing tool that the wine growers use.
It seems like it's a very broad designation, rather precise to the area, so that's, that was why I was asking, because. The more of that, the more broad there is to that, the the more goal three exceptions, you're gonna have to jump through hoops to get taken care of, so.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, the AVA came up, you know, I'm out of the blue, it seemed like, because I was on the planning commission when it came up and, you know. Or the, I think it almost was kind of a surprise to her, it's like, all of a sudden, there was this overlay came on and it's like. Well, we never approved any overlay on this ground.
But it's in statute and in rules, so we have to approve it, yeah, that's, that's very true.
So it's one of those state things with no local input.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just my, my. Yeah, it just, my, my final two, two bits about it is the marketplace has obviously done a really good job on its own in Moro County. We. Everything that's either, um, approved or under construction or on the books would result in twenty six thousand acres of solar. That's sixteen percent of our dry land wheat in Moro County. So I don't know if, uh. You know, if we're looking at balancing things, you know, there's a mostly positive attributes, but at some point. When does it start to really affect the, the dry land weed economy? I don't know. Um, the Women's Coalition Economic Summit on Friday has somebody from the Wheat League talking about those things. And other things as well. So it seems to work. Um, the, I'll mention the Heritage Trail. Last week, we interviewed with, um, Vincent's help, which was really great. It's really great. He's got this recreation parks and recreation and programming background. So he, um, helps Landon and I. Um, so did, um. Somebody from George Shimer from Boardman Parks and Burl Cooley from Aragon Park. So. We interviewed three of the five proposals and, um, came out, uh, with a winner. So with Matt's permission, we posted the notice of intent to award and that. Will expire the close of business on the twenty fourth and then we can proceed. So very exciting. Um, to have five really good proposals. I, you always hope you get at least one and two is even better. Five is really, um, fantastic. So. Um, Landon and I are working on that together and also Alina Estrada, our summer intern, hoping to get some interest from. Some younger folks in the community and the Heritage Trail Plan update. Um, uh, last month you approved, uh, an extension of a contract with Sea Reach Limited who, um. Had subcontracted the construction of the interpretive panels and I'm going to schedule, um. Next time you're in Irrigan, uh, Landa can go over and show you the interpretive panels. They're really nice. And we only have eight of them. It doesn't take very long. Um, I'm working on plenty of water things. Our water advisory committee met on June third. Um, it made your packet longer, but I included the PowerPoints, um. From two of the agencies that submitted, um, presentation. One is Department of Agriculture. And one is the D E Q. My hope is that if people read the packets in addition to the board. They have a better sense of what agency, what agency does what. Um, and the Department of Agriculture, it's this new strategic implementation area. We're the first. It includes some lands in, um. Uh, Yumitalik County, but mostly Moro County. It's the first of its kind in the state and it's happening here. So they're. Um, working with farmers and looking at their irrigation practices, um, providing education and outreach. And then also the presentation by, um, Laura Glym from the D E Q. Uh, that wraps up the state agency presentations for the Water Advisory Committee and at our meeting in July, hopefully we'll hear from. Some local governments from the cities. And then we took a look at our first list of possible policies and projects to be recommended to the board. Uh, Commissioner Drago and I had, oh, yeah.
Go ahead, I'll.
Oh, we had one, one field day, um. With some farmers who said, hey, you know, nobody pays attention to us and we have some water issues and I, that was very rewarding, um. Uh, there was a lot of tension when we first got there. Um, they have some pretty serious water, um, quantity issues and we had O W R D there. I just felt like we were the conduit to get them to talk to O W R D really, but, um, so. O W R D and some of those landowners are gonna be working with another larger farm to think, talk about working collaboratively on a recharge project.
So with that, in the S I A, I was asked by several of the, the individuals that were in that meeting, why their. Why the S I A was, was outlined where it's at and why they couldn't have included some of that other irrigated land. That they have, because it was right on the property borderline of their irrigated land. And basically I said, well, that's, I can't answer that. That's a O W R D question, right? That's, it was water resources. Who came up with the S I A?
Um, uh, O D A, Department of. Yeah.
So.
Somebody asked that question in the meeting and now I can't remember what, um, Rob's, um, Hibs's reply was.
It was, it was, I think what he said was, if you look at the map, it's obvious that it encompasses the highest. Concentration of irrigated ag, which is obvious when you look at it, except for R D O.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, in Moro County, that's right. And obviously not the depot and nothing north of I eighty four. Yeah. Uh, so the EPA research grant, we held two workshops, one on communication, one on data. And I know it feels like we talk about doing work all the time, but I think we're fairly on the cusp of doing some. Innovative new research, but we didn't want to launch into that with G S I's guidance, of course, and the steering committee. Repeating data collection if we don't have to. The QAP, the Quality Assurance Protocol Plan, G S I is working on that and I've. Connected them with EPA, so the protocol for new data sampling, they'll, um, have to have a plan that EPA approves. Um, still waiting for a subaward agreement, um, for our partner agency, Matella County on that. Um, the phase two of the Congressional Direct Spending. Uh, the one point two million, I talked with our, our grant writer, Nick Decody, and this will be the third or fourth. Of the R ten, the EPA region ten that he's worked on. So he knows those folks. He can, um, shepherd that. I just have to work. Um, um, on really the content of it. We are looking into the possibility of extending that, because I think the allocation's good through twenty thirty. So we'll have this EPA grant research and then that can follow immediately afterwards. And it might even have the possibility to use capital funds. Um, because the project we're working on now is really just research. So stay tuned, more on that. Um, and then Administrator Jensen and I have had several discussions and meetings, internal and external about. Um, possible solutions for the Westland neighborhood. We've submitted those grant applications to Business Oregon to do the. Preliminary feasibility both for water and wastewater, which would give us just the ballpark costs. That we could then share with landowners, um. And we're talking again, meeting again this afternoon with a third party who might be able to go out and talk with the neighborhoods. And some of those landowners, um, to see what it is they want. Yesterday, um, I went out to Beef Northwest and had a tour. Sixty-six thousand steers out there. It's pretty impressive, but. But can you do the math? Uh, it's pretty mind boggling. And then the manager out there, Wes Killian, asked if I would talk with his staff. They have. Safety meetings every so often and they wanted to learn more about what the county's doing with water and. There's a lot of distrust, so we have more to do. To build trust, but the communication plan that we're gonna come up with, with, with the EPA grant is going to. Not just talk about the research with this EPA grant, but these other efforts that are going, because it's, there's a lot of moving parts.
Do they, do they understand that? That because of the capital permitting that it's well above and beyond county control?
I think, um, I think the managers out there do. But then a lot of their employees, some, you know, live in our county and some don't, um. They're, they asked some good questions and I actually asked if there was a way for me to connect one on one with some of those people to explain. Both this EPA research and maybe the, the one-off project that Matt and I are working on with Wes Glenn. Um. Because if nobody wants to make any changes, deepening well is not gonna guarantee you get clean drinking water. We now have record of basalt wells that. Have high nitrate levels. So, um, also looking at the. Uh, remind me, the nitrification project you told me about, uh, what's the name of it? Um, that, that.
Denitrification?
The, the, um, Aqua Tech Nitrate Softener.
Yes.
Might be a more feasible option for some.
Yeah, I mean, and, yeah, it. It could be. There's, there's issues with that, just so you understand, when you take the nitrate out of the water. It doesn't go away. It's there. It's in the ground still. Right? It just isn't in your house.
It's not, you're not drinking.
You're not drinking, but it does not, it does not denitrify. It's a nitrification softening tool, which makes it allowable to screen it out, but it's still there.
Oh, important.
It's not in your water, but it is in the encompass of the, of the filter itself. Um, which they haven't been around long enough to really know how. How long until you have to do something with that? Because, I mean, you're gonna build up nitrates in, in that small.
Area, yeah.
So there are some, there are some issues with it too. It's not a, it's not a fix all for sure. It has its own, you know, every solution's gonna have its own problems. And that Aqua Tech is, you know, works very well. So the one that I'm familiar with takes it from. Seventy-four parts per million at the well and it's less than seven in the house.
Okay.
So.
And then long-term maintenance on those things.
It's a new system, so I don't know that, right? Uh, you do have to add salt, um, to soften as well. Obviously, salt application, um. So. I'm not, it hasn't been in long enough to know.
Yeah.
And it took a lot of tweaking to get it to where it worked. It didn't work as well.
Oh.
First went in, um, and after testing realized that it wasn't optimal. And that happened at two of the houses that I'm aware of. So.
Uh, okay, good to know.
They are able to tweak them, change them and, and get it down. I think the other house, it was forty. Forty-two parts per million at the well and it was down to point, uh, four point two.
Nice. That's good.
And it started off at like nine and with tweaking, they got it down to four.
Nice.
So, and it's also seasonal, right? I mean, as your flows change, uh, seasonal as well. So there's different, different factors, but interesting. It is, uh, it is able to get you to stay drinking water, but doesn't create a bigger problem in the end. We don't know that yet. It's too. Kind of too early in the process to know what it's gonna do.
Lots of technology out there. I, I'm feeling pretty good about, um, the subconsultant that G S I has for this, at least this initial research project. Which is H D R engineers and they have some real hands-on experience with. Membranes that do, you know, large area filtration, et cetera. It's way out of my bailiwick, but it's kind of interesting.
Someone else that's very familiar with that is rock industry.
Oh, okay.
Cecil Rock knows a lot about denitrification as well. So if you find yourself in the, the position to. Talk with him, you might be able to, he, he'll, he'll talk over your head too, though.
Oh, well, I walked by his place, so I'll just, I'll just knock on his door and see if he's around. Good. The last thing I wanted to mention about water, different activities is the Love Guama and Commissioner Drago will tell you that. Um, April, um, the state and the governor's office through Courtney Warner Prole came in and said, look, we're gonna take a time out and see. Do another reassessment. Remember the old Love Guama got. Reorganized and revamped in the fall of twenty twenty-two and now they're doing this again. Um, they're taking an internal look at it and in the meantime, also the state agencies are meeting with EPA. And Robin Kennedy can tell you. This piece also, there are no local folks involved in those discussions about our basin and. Commissioner raised it up very diplomatically, um.
And they answered it very vaguely.
Yeah, it's just this way they wanna handle it. So, um. It might be something we bring back to the board and, um, try to be just maybe a little bit more assertive about asking for a. Uh, a county role, but both counties, not just our county, so that when you're designing the fate of the basin where we live and work and play. It's, um, and we know the basin, I think, better. The local folks know the better than the state agencies. We'd like to have a seat at that table. And, and we're not. So state agencies are really nervous about the work that EPA is doing and requiring that. They take se- se- several steps, but the real action, the real projects happen at the local level. So. That's what I got to say about that piece.
And then. Subcommittee.
The subcommittees are kind of on hold.
We didn't meet this, we didn't meet yesterday. We got canceled right at the last minute. And. That. Ends in August.
The funding for that.
For that ends in August and that's only, that's the latest date we have for a meeting. After August, there are no more subcommittee meetings on the, on the.
Postdoc subcommittee?
Yes.
And what's your thinking about, if, I'm on the spot about funding to finish that?
Um, I think you're gonna find a lot of roadblocks at the state level. There's, there's some discrepancies from what. The subdot committee. Hydrogeology findings and what the state believes to state, not, not the state in general, but each of those. Agencies in the state, O W R D, O D A, they all have. A different mindset and they don't, there's not a lot of consensus on how that direction is going. So I think you're gonna find. That if you wanted to do that, it would be strictly a county funding. There's no, I don't think the state's gonna be willing to.
And it might, and it's important enough to a lot of, um, industry farming and otherwise that they might. They might come up with some funding. So the initial price tag was just over a million and that's taken them. Four or five years to spend. And they're really close to actually coming up with a final product that characterizes what's happening. Not just the groundwater flow. So rather than throwing a blanket out saying. All the farming, all the land application is causing this, it, it, um, what this. What Dr. Shalini and, um, her team are finding.
Suraj.
Suraj, yeah, they're finding that there are pockets, so you.
It's compartmentalized water rather than a giant lake. Um, and, and understanding where those folds and fields are and how it's flowing is gonna be. Fairly important to the solutions, so you're not trying to just fix one big body of water.
That's right. Yeah, that's right.
And their, their, their. Their theory or their thesis, and that's all it really is, right? Because we don't, we don't really know. But it's different by a long ways from what was previously considered.
Significantly.
Significant. And that's changing everything and it's like, that's why they're like putting the brakes on it.
So I know in the, the water fund that we approved, I think we have twenty thousand dollars in that. That was, that's a drop in the bucket, um. For completing that project. So it might be something, I don't know if you and Commissioner Doran have talked about, you know, what. How the counties would work together on funding.
And we're still waiting for Shalini to give us a better idea.
The, the number that we asked.
You asked for it.
Okay, okay.
That was a good question to ask and, like I said, it's hard to ask for something when you don't know what you're asking for.
Mm-hmm. It'd be a shame to have to revert back to that nineteen ninety hydrogeologic, hydro, hydraulic and hydrogeologic study. Because they've come a long way. So more, more on that. Okay, it feels like I've talked too long. Um, we have been working on our natural hazard mitigation plan for almost three years and it, um, with. The state helping us navigate that and they had turnover three times on staff people, but it got submitted last week to O E M, Oregon Emergency Management. And, um, once they're finished with it, if they have any questions, we might need to adjust and then it goes to FEMA. So hopefully by the end of the year, I'll have it in front of you to adopt. Um, final things, um, in May, Daisy and I attended what's called the Oregon Planners Network Meeting in, um, Baker City. Um, I presented on a panel and so we learned, learn, um, it was great to have. A get together and we learn and share with those things and, um. I am working on the Eastern Oregon Economic Summit. I've done that for the past three or four years. And on, I don't know who signed up from the county. We were a sponsor. Five hundred dollar level, so there's two. I get to go for free. Daisy's already signed up. The tour in the afternoon on Thursday, we'll have lunch at Sage Center and then we get to tour and talk about. Um, uh, really cool things happening and then the dinner is at, um, Hydamon's property on Kemp Lane. If you know where that is, sort of Central County. So I've got a bunch of talking points. We're gonna, um, drive down Bombing Range Road and talk about transmission lines. A few notes about data centers and A W S has helped script that. Gonna stop at Finley Buttes and we've got some folks from Finley Buttes and then the. Uh, it was Finley Bio and now it's Archaea, I think is the sub I'm looking at you, because I think the Solid Waste Committee, what's it called? Archaea?
I don't know what the new name is.
Uh, and then we're, and then we're going down, um. To Little Juniper, down to the, um, southern end of the bombing range to Wells Springs. Uh, we can get out and people can actually walk on an Oregon Trail route on the bombing range. Those interpretive panels are in tough shape. And they're really terrible, but, um, um, that might be another project we try to tackle maybe with a historical society. Then we're doing a loop. Coming back to show the solar, um, battery storage on Strawberry Lane, the next era, and then driving. Across the highway and having dinner in the middle of a field. I have nothing to do with the dinner. Um, that's catered by the restaurant Broken Spoke in Lexington. It's a big project for them. And, um, then the buses will end up back in Hermiston and then Friday is the full day session. My, from my part of the Friday session is the water panel. Um, unfortunately, I had somebody back out for family. My, from my part of the Friday session is the water panel. Um, unfortunately, I had somebody back out for family reasons yesterday. But I think it'll still be a good panel. Um, climate is the theme of the conference this year and we'll be talking about that water quality and water.
Um, from our sponsorship tickets, we are sending Daisy as one of them. The other one is available. So.
There's two available, cause I.
Daisy gets in.
We already took care of her registration, cause I thought y'all would. Are you going through UEC?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you still have two.
I was planning to attend, but um, ambulance interviews kind of, so.
I won't be able to. I, this looked interesting, but I scheduled some other stuff, so.
I think, I think I can. I can go.
Oh, okay. So that goes for you. If you need the connection to do his registration.
Yeah, if there's space with me after this.
Do you wanna do the tour and the, and the, the tourist all day Thursday? We start at eight and we get back at like seven thirty at night.
Start at the high school in Hermiston.
In Hermiston, yeah, yeah. We're gonna, um, gonna see UEC solar project. I, I had not, I'm not helping with the afternoon tour. We just, just the, not helping with the morning tour, just the afternoon. And the Port of Umatilla and um, uh, housing development and then Marla.
Are you on the tour?
Yeah, I mean, everybody's on the tour.
If you sign, if you wanna do just Friday, you can do just Friday or you can do Thursday and Friday.
I'm just making sure that it's not an issue.
Oh.
Um, as long as you're joining for educational or.
No decisions being made.
No decisions being made, it's fine.
Okay.
So make sure.
Okay, we'll chat later. Okay, thank you. Any thoughts, comments, questions?
Next up would be our pressures month report. It's usually just written, we have it, so. Mr. Julian wants to say anything. I don't see her. Uh, Councilspable, that's uh. Self-explanatory, so unless you want to add anything, Kevin, you know. Next up would be correspondence.
Nope.
Commissioner reports.
Uh, nothing more than really, you know, you had the Krea meeting last Friday, you kind of heard some of the discussion there. Yeah, and I mean, that kind of filled, you know, what Lub Guama is doing and subdot committee and. Uh, other than that, there is a deflection meeting coming up, but it's, I will be involved in that. It's gonna be mostly law enforcement and DAs. Figuring out how the process will go with Umatilla and Morrow County as a, as a combined effort. So, and if that's feasibly done. So I won't be involved in that one. But I will get a report.
Did you guys, I was gonna tell, do you guys get a chance to read that proposal I sent to you about the consortium? Did you get a chance to read that?
I did.
I just wanted to get your thoughts. And the reason I ca- I wrote that is uh, it seems like we're just kinda. I, I, I'm not arguing the importance of what's going on with Westland. I think it's great. Seems to be some opportunities. These are kind of just backing into it though. Uh, to me, um, and, and, and if we're lucky, and, and, you know, if, if it doesn't look like something you guys want to do, that's fine. But if it might be, I'd kind of like to see about maybe holding up, uh, a work session on it and talk about it. But like I said, I'm not, you know, if, if, if you think it's unnecessary or not worth it or wrong idea, that's fine too. But like I said, I, I feel like, uh, you know, uh, there, there's gonna be other parties involved. I think other parties should be involved with this than just Morrow County. I don't, you know, we didn't create this problem. You know, and I think other people should be, be in, involved, officially involved, you know? So that's what my thought is, you know, like the port, and I had a meeting with Matt and Tamara about this and somebody suggested maybe bring the city of Boardman in. You know, and I modeled after the broadband committee. I think we've had great luck with the broadband. We're way ahead. Uh, you know, we're actually putting, you know, getting ready to put fiber out. We've handled the private answers. This, I look at this as kind of the, the actual finance construction arm. Of, you know, we have GSI with the studies. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tamara. They will, they're, if I remember reading their proposals and stuff, they're gonna provide the engineering suggestions, I guess, or plans. And as they do the studies and stuff, then we would pass it on to the consortium. And they would add, they would come up with financing, do the planning and actual construction like the broadband. That's exactly what they're doing. Broadband has brought in money for private business, brought in money from the federal. Uh, and I think this, this thing could, this, a water consortium could do the same thing. We could get some private money. I know when the, when the emergency was first declared a couple of years ago, when some organization was done and uh, in the north end with some of the businesses up there. And they were willing to put, make money available for some type. Nobody knew where anybody was going. And they said, well, we have some money. It was, there was, as far as I know, it was never really tapped into. Do you remember it at all? Uh, I, I thought there was like three hundred thousand dollars available or something. And, and this would give us, this would give us some, a, a definition, you know? I mean, basically, the county is going to be running it because I think Matt and Tamara and Kevin should be the main players, you know? So we're gonna be kind of running it. But I just think we need a formal uh, group like the broadband to get all, to get other parties involved rather than just us kind of go along. Because also, I see it as West Glenn is only the beginning. It's, you know, and I think we need a budget. I think we need to know, you know, where, where, just like we do with broadband, we have a budget. It's open meetings, you know, it's its own legal entity and. You know, suggested, well, maybe not a IGA, you know, type of setup, maybe a different kind of legal format. That could be looked at, doesn't matter. I'm not hung up on that. I just think, I don't know, that's my thought. I just, I just think it, it handled nothing but construction. Let somebody else do the studying, you know, let somebody else do this or that. We're, we're, we're zeroed in on the middle ground, we've always talked about. Getting clean water to people on a permanent basis, not trying to solve the Lub Guama, not trying to provide water on a daily basis. We're right there in the middle, where we provided, you know, whether it's systems, deeper wells, interseptic. Uh, you know, joint well agreements and clusters, I don't know.
And you did have the consideration that the port, if they are involved, have to be completely removed when it comes to SCP money, right?
When that, when it comes to what?
The SCP money. They can't be involved with that part of it.
That, that, I would like a little more clarification on that. I've just heard that that's possible. I mean, and this is gonna be a completely separate legal entity. So maybe they could get around that. I mean, and, and, uh, you know, I mean, okay, so. Uh, and, 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 you know, you define, what do you mean by the court can't be involved? They can't make a decision? And let them recruit, recuse themselves. I still think they need to be.
No, I don't disagree with that. I just wanted to.
They need to be with us.
I'm just bringing it forward.
I know, yeah, I heard that. No, I, I mentioned that in that. But I, I'm not so sure. I don't think that's been delved into completely as. Uh, the, the IGA forms are completely legal. Well, I, I talked to Justin a little bit about it. Not quite sure whether, what, how complete it is. It doesn't absolve you of uh, liability, but. Just get some more people with skin in the game. Maybe when you're near, you're again. Uh, you know, we kind of like a zone of influence like we have Chris. Okay, uh, if it's near Boardman, Boardman could be part of the consortium. Near, here, here, here could be ones out just in an area, say there's four, five wells, like, you know, all by themselves. And I just throw things out there, cause I have no idea with GSI or what kind of, you know, like I said, is, there's a thousand wells in Lub Guama. And we're concentrating on seven, right, seventy right now. There's still nine hundred thirty. And I, I don't have anything wrong with Westland. I think it's, actually, I think it's great. But I think we ought to look, make sure we're looking beyond Westland. You know, we have a budget in the, in the broadband, you know? And we have an administrator that, which I think Matt should be able, should do that. He would have more input from the community different. And then it was suggested that other people you brought in as part of this board, I think Tamara would be excellent board chair, kind of a perpetual. If she would do that, because she would handle the, that part of it. And then, uh, that's, that's my thought. And we're, and we're set up, you know, Kevin would agree to it. We're set up, we have the, the, you know, more of the staff, more of the tools. We've already proved that we can handle these kind of complex, uh, I don't want to speak for Kevin, these complex grants and stuff that have, you know, uh, tracking the revenue, tracking the expenses, tracking the, uh, you know, uh, uh, when it's done, you know, and everything we all spent, you know, the auditing part of it. So i- if you think that's something you want to think about, you know, I'd like to hold a a work session. If it's not, then I guess just. I mean, to me, somewhere along the line, we gotta say, okay, where are we going and how are we gonna get there? You know?
Yeah, I have a problem with having a work session and discussing this, not at all. Think having, the more help we get, the more likely we're gonna have solutions.
I think so.
But I also want to make sure that we are aware of solutions ramifications. Just de- like I said, just deepening a well, you know, obviously isn't gonna fix everything or a lot of them. Cause it is so complex, but the more help we can get, definitely.
Right. And like I said, to me, this group, uh, this organization would be uh, for actual projects in the ground. Let's go, let's get the money. And I, and I have a feeling maybe there would be some private businesses might kick in if they know what's gonna be. You know, we got five hundred thousand from Amazon for the broadband, you know? And I think a lot of that was because they do, we were, we were actually putting fiber line out there. That was my, that's my thought. So, anyway. If you think you might wanna, okay. Jeff, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, it sounds fine. You know, like you talked about the money early on in the emergency declaration. That was, you know, the businesses, the ordinary and the port and RDO was part of that. And then that morphed into the H two O EO. Coalition, I believe, and, yeah. I know some of that money, they pledged to it, um, paid for some of the initial testing. Paid for some of the initial, um, source, um, reverse osmosis filters and some of that stuff. But yeah, if there was something going forward, I'm sure that they'd be willing to participate.
I think they're more excited about action.
Consortium would be just focused on action items. And you could take it to the private business and you could say, okay, here's what we're gonna do. And then once, uh, Westland gets done, and hopefully GSI has another project ready for us. And you go, hey, this is what we're gonna do. And, and, and I, you know, I'm not familiar with grants. Tamara knows more about this than I do, from the state or the federal is. You, you know, if you have a certain project, there's different areas of the federal government you can go to for actual capital projects. Related studies. I don't know any of that. Would open up another window. When you come in there with a plan, with an actual capital plan and say, okay, here's what we have to actually do. You know, would you be able to go to a different department in the federal government?
Well, I think the USDA and our US Rural Utility Services has money available for water infrastructure projects.
As would the second EPA grant, correct, Tamara?
We're.
To a certain extent.
We're hoping that's true for the second one. That's why, yeah, especially where we get preliminary engineering done for part of it. Um, and then a lot of times those capital grants allow you to finish that last part of the engineering. So you go from maybe fifty percent to a hundred percent with that design with that.
So, and I think, you know, so if we have a work session on it, I think it'd be good to bring in Debbie Ready or somebody from H two O EO. And have them at the table because I think that we, we want them there long-term. Get their input.
Yeah, she might be a good one for the at-large. I don't know. That's up to the committee to decide. But, you know, that type of things, uh, you know. Because I know she was really excited to help, not, you know, nobody was excited about the, you know, what happened. The flying and the, and the emergency and all that. She was energized, let me put it that way, ever in the beginning. And I didn't know if, it seemed to not get any traction, but she was looking to help the businesses. And I don't know if they ever were able to. But I think a lot of those private businesses, when they see actual projects, yeah.
And that's what, and Debbie's, I've talked to Debbie several times about it. And she's always been fairly adamant that. When are we gonna get to the action items?
Yeah.
So that's when, that's when she wants her involvement.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. I mean, I'm thinking they would open up the person. Everything would be taken care of for them. They don't have to. Or, and I remember in the beginning, they were worried about liability. And uh, that was a concern. I mean, anyway. Okay, let's go to a work session. Okay.
Chair, if there's i- i- no other commissioner reports, I do have two items that you need to bring up before the commission.
Yeah, let me think real quick, like, I don't see if I had something else. I was thinking I had something else in the back of my mind.
So, um, one thing that just came to my attention during the meeting is we have not received our CIS renewal documents. Um, uh, for the insurance, general liability, auto, uh, workers' compensation. Uh, workers' compensation is within my authorization level, about a hundred and eleven thousand dollars last year. We don't have the new rates yet. Um, the general liability is about four hundred and forty thousand dollars. So that's beyond mine. Our policy ends on six thirty twenty twenty-four. So we don't have another meeting scheduled before then. Um, yeah, we can address this in two ways. We can either look to do a special meeting once we get those documents in. Or as this is kind of a recurring normal, uh, transactional kind of expense, even though it's a big chunk. And if there is a motion for, to, to authorize me to review and, and sign all, sign those documents. I know it's not a, an agenda item and I apologize for not having that there, but, um, we'd like to make sure we're insured past June thirtieth. So, um, just based on commissioners. For others, if you'd like a special meeting just to review those, or if you'd like to authorize me to review and sign on behalf of the county.
You know, it seems like this came up last year, didn't it?
It did, yeah.
And if I remember right, we authorized to move forward with signing it within a parameter if it didn't exceed a certain percentage.
It did, at least, what was budgeted. And then it ended up exceeding what was budgeted by a very small amount, but, yeah.
So I guess would we be comfortable with, I guess I'll make the motion and we'll figure out if we're comfortable with this. We'll authorize Administrator Jensen to sign the documents and proceed forward if it doesn't exceed budget by more than ten percent.
I'll say that.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, all opposed? Most concurred.
And if it exceeds ten percent, then we'll have a special meeting.
Okay. Not that we won't have insurance, but we'll just have awareness then.
Yeah.
Um, appreciate that consideration. Um, the second one is we are looking at an AV, um, remodel of the, uh, the BART building, the main one that we use for, uh, VOC meetings down there. Um, our, our idea, this is being, uh, through a emergency management grant. So they have at least two monitors. Uh, when they activate an EOC. Um, we're looking to, um, when you do AV projects and you bring in one of those providers, it quickly comes to two, three hundred thousand dollars. We're looking at, at a system. We just installed a beautiful monitor downstairs in the lower, uh, uh, conference room in the BART building. Uh, with a poly, uh, conference bar. We're looking to do something along the light that ways with two monitors that are uh, a little bigger than this. Please?
Um, I, I did some more work on it last night. Probably don't wanna get to the specifics. It could be two or three monitors and they would be this size, probably a little bit larger.
And then we'd be looking at one camera to, uh, and change the parameters possibly to have the, uh, the board of commissioners sit at the head of the room, staff like this, and then, you know, allow more audience space in the, in the area. Uh, you would have to look at one of the, the, the side monitors like you do here, or possibly the back monitor if we go three. Uh, but just wondering if the board of commissioners wants to have any input on that, or if, if you're okay with, I mean, it is your room.
So my question would be, are we gonna be with our backs to the audience or facing the audience?
You would be facing the audience with the monitor behind you. So the audience can look at you and the monitor while you'd have to turn your head or look at the monitor all the way in the back for the others. While you'd have to turn your head or look at the monitor all the way in the back for the others. We, uh, the one thing we're looking at is how to make it a plug and play, simple system. That can have a split screen showing the BOC and then a, then a camera that would capture the, any speakers uh, that are in front of you. Uh, so that's, that's part of.
I guess my concern at this point is being there and seeing how all the. Stuff at the head of that room where we'd be sitting is all electronics. I'm assuming that's all gonna be taken care of.
Yeah, the, all the computer stuff.
All the wiring and all that stuff, cause that's like, when you go in, that's like, that's like a no-go zone.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Want to get rid of that and minimize it as much as we can. And so, um, again. What's your room? Uh, even though it's used for other things, we just wanted to see if you wanted to have specific insight on it or allow us.
We'll trust you to make sure that we don't have to have tripping hazards when we walk away. That's my opinion anyway.
All right.
Should say we, I.
All right, uh, we'll proceed. If there's any little hiccups, we'll let you know, but I appreciate that. Just letting you know, we're, we're gonna be working on that. Okay. Sorry for the late additions. Thank you.
Anything else to come before the commission today?
So I'm trying to find out if we have another.